Hi. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. This is a special public hearing of the Board of Elections for Calvert County. Can everyone hear me okay? There is a microphone, but I want to make sure everyone can hear me okay.
Can you use the microphone?
Yes, that, is that better?
Yeah.
I'll sit down. I'm not used to sitting. I'm a lawyer. Usually I stand when I talk, but I get it, so we'll do that. Okay. So, I'll start over. Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Board of Elections to discuss, or for a public hearing for changes in polling places and election boundaries. This will be a public hearing. We will be taking public comments after a presentation by the head of the Board, by the head of the Department of Elections. Before we begin, I would like to have the Board of Elections introduce themselves. I'll start with myself. My name is Keith Lotridge. I'm the president of the Board of Elections, and I throw it to my other board members to introduce themselves.
My name is Barry Wood.
Tricia Powell.
Cassandra O'Comois.
So, we do have an agenda for this evening, and I'll start with some comments. Citizens are invited to provide comment on this meeting after the presentation has concluded. Anyone here in person must sign in on the sheet next to Robin Sherry. Actually, where is the sheet at this point?
They're at the back.
The sheet in the back. If you have public comments and you cannot find the sheet to sign in, please locate one of the people here on the side. I want to make sure everybody who wishes to make a comment has that opportunity. So if you can't find the sheet, the seat, sheet to sign in, please speak to one of our staff members. After you sign in, you'll have that opportunity. So, anyone here in person must sign in on the sheet next to Robin Sherry to speak. Speakers who are providing the comment will be limit allocated two minutes, a maximum of two minutes. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Gail Hatfield, who has done a lot of work on this and has a presentation about the proposed changes. Thank you.
Yeah, you can clap at him. It's okay. Oh, okay. Yes, I am Gail Hatfield. I am the Elections Administrator, have been there for 37 years. So, tonight, we're doing this presentation to give you an idea of some of the changes that we're trying to make with some of our precincts, okay? We're hoping that the changes are better, is what I'm looking for, not to hinder anyone, but to try to make it better for everyone. So, first off, what I want to show you is the comparison of our legislative lines. This is where things started, was with the redistricting. Before, this is our legislative lines. As you can see, remember, they went way up, and it was kind of a crazy line. Nothing went really across the county. And then, this year, or 2022, once it was all completed, our legislative lines, as you see, are now going straight across, okay? And then, we also had the commissioners change some of their district lines, too, to kind of coincide with some of the legislative lines. So, some background information that I'd like to make sure that you all are aware of is before, now, this is before 2020, so what we wanted to let you know is kind of like how many people came out that voted on Election Day versus our early voting and versus absentee. And as you can see, before 2020 and before COVID and before all of that happened, everyone was basically coming out to vote on Election Day. It was basically, you know, you can see the total's way up there. And in 2010, 2014, 2018, you can see that mail-in, we hardly ever had any, what we called absentees then. We had about 4%. That was it. And then, with the early voting back then, we had only about 16%, and we thought we were doing good with that 16%. So, this is just to kind of show you what it was, and now it's changing. So, I want to go into the changes, too, with that, with you. So, some background about after the 2020 census, of course, you all know, we were stuck with redistricting, and we all know redistricting couldn't get their minds made up. You know that the election was coming, redistricting was still going, we couldn't get anything solid until almost the last minute. Then, when it was time for us to set up for our precincts and our polling places, then we got a call from the school board, which shut down four schools from us that we could not use in that summer because they were renovating the schools. So then, we had to shift a lot of voters to a different precinct. For example, Southern Middle School was then moved, back then, to the Community Center, and which really worked out well because the Community Center has such an awesome, large room, and the parking was so much better. So, that gave us 20 polling places in 2022, okay? And of those 20 polling places, we also had almost 24% was in mail-in. Now, this is the 2022 elections. So, this shows you, we went from a, you know, 4%, and we've been gradually climbing for the mail-in ballots to almost 24%. We also increased in the early voting. People, now that it's getting more out there, people are getting more aware of early voting, they're taking advantage of it a lot more. So, that went up to 23% just for the early voting. So, with this, also in 2020, or 2022, so last election, we, because of the closures of some schools, because of the redistricting, because of the lines, the legislative lines and going through precincts, we ended up creating what we called a super precinct, which is Huntington High School. Huntington High School, because of the legislative lines, we had pieces of precincts that were left over, all in the Huntington area. So we combined them all, and we made what we called a super precinct, as a trial basis, see how it worked. It worked great. We ended up with like 22 judges in there. We had like eight to 10 poll books. There were no lines on the general election day, and usually the general election is when it's the busiest. We had, let me see, four, four or five people giving out ballots, and basically, we had 30 voting booths. So basically, what we were saying is, that super precinct, instead of you having only 10 voting booths and maybe 10 judges, everything was between doubled to tripled to put into this large auditorium so that people could get in and get out a lot faster. So, that really did work very well. So, to show you, we ended up with 7,758 voters in Huntington High School. That is how many is registered for that school. So, we had a 58% turnout on Election Day. So, the mail-in voting, as you can see, we added it up, was 25% of those showed up, or did the mail-in voting. Early voting was 26% of those voters that would vote in Huntington normally did the early vote, which only left 2,206, which is 49% of the registered voters to even show up for Election Day to vote. So, 2,000 is a drop in the bucket for an Election Day that's busy. A normal precinct would do between 2,000 and 3,000, you know, in a day, in the 15-hour day, is what I call it. So, as you can see, there were no lines there. We had almost 8,000 registered, but as you can see, with a 58% turnout, we only had 2,000 that actually came on Election Day. The rest of them voted early or by absentee ballot. So, this, to what I called was a success, because of us increasing the poll books, increasing the judges, increasing everything in that precinct to allow more people to be able to get through the line and vote and, you know, get out faster. So, that worked very well for them. So, that was what we called a super precinct. So, what we're doing now is what we're, you know, hoping to do, is to try to, you know, combine a few more in the county and try to get in the areas where we have difficulty finding election judges to begin with. So, we're trying to hopefully work that out. So, in the northern end, our change that we want to do now is, right now, we use Northern Middle School. Northern Middle School is the polling place where Dunkirk is going to Northern Middle, okay? We use Fairview Vote Center. You know, that's our early vote center. That's the trailer that was sitting on the field behind the library, okay? And if any of you voted there early, you also know then how small that trailer is, how the field is, how it is to try to park, what happens if it rains. It's always, you know, going to be an issue. And until the county can provide us what we call a permanent northern section for a vote center, which we are hoping in the future, maybe by 2026, by 2028, hopefully, we will have a vote center in the Dunkirk area. So, but until then, we're stuck using this trailer. So, what happened was, you have this trailer right there on Chaneyville Road as soon as you turn. So, voters are confused because they think, oh, that's a polling place. I need to turn in there and go. So, that was what was happening, even though, you know, because they know it was a vote center. So, on Election Day, they were going there. So, we actually have, it's still going to be the early vote site, but what we have right now is, like I said, Dunkirk and Chaneyville area are going to Northern Middle. The other half of Dunkirk right now was assigned to Fairview Vote Center. And if you all see that, that's right there on Chaneyville Road, okay? Dunkirk, this is the Section 37 that goes to Fairview. This is the, this is the section that goes to Northern High School, okay? All right. So, this, I want to show you the differences. Okay, this is Northern Middle. One, you have to come down Chaneyville Road, and then you can't come in here, which a lot of people do, because there's no way to get. You have to go this way, this way, this way, and around. And then, it's right here in this little corner. So, there really isn't, it's not voter-friendly. So, what we're anticipating or trying to do is to move the voting place from here to here. We got permission now to use the high school. The high school has a very large room right here. So, there's so much more parking, and it's so much more accessible. And then, like I said, with Fairview just being right up here, I believe Northern High School can combine both of those precincts. So, is this, is, this is kind of like a view of the Fairview Vote Center. See, here's, here's the parking lot. Here's the library. And then, we're right here in this little field. It's just like a little ball field. So, it's so confusing for voters if half of Dunkirk is going to Northern High School. The other side of the highway of Dunkirk is going to Fairview Vote Center, which is in a field in a trailer. So, why not have all of Dunkirk together go to the same voting location? So, it has more parking, a much, much larger voting, voting room, and it has easier to access as the location is in front of the school entrance. So, it's right there. Easy in, easy out. And also, like I said, without having the Fairview signs for voting and everything, people will know to go past there and go to Northern High School. Okay? So, in the southern area, so this was part to be, we didn't have time to change this, because when the county commissioners changed their district lines, they wanted to even up the third district, the second district, and the first district. Well, of course, the first district had a lot less voters and population than the second district. So, they chose a map, skimming off a piece of the second district and adding it into the first district, which then added 1,100 more voters were added into my Mutual Elementary. And if any of you have been to Mutual Elementary, it's not a very big place at all. And to add 1,100 more voters, it was kind of hectic in that general election. There was no time for us to be able to change the voters out at that time, because it was so close to the election, that that 1,100 voters ended up going to Mutual. And like I said, it was, it was pretty crowded. And the issue with that precinct is, because 1 and 4, which is Mutual, is on this side of the highway, but it's also, like I said, the first district. And 1 and 3, which is St. Leonard Elementary, which is across the highway, is also under the legislative line. And then, the next legislative line is right under them. So, we're really tied to trying to even up Mutual and St. Leonard is our only option in that area, is to try to, you know, get the numbers a little closer. Because here you see, this is the 1 and 4, which is Mutual, right now. And this is where Mutual's going. This is where the St. Leonard Elementary School is right now. And if you see, you see this green? See, this is a different part of it. This goes up into the second district. And then, down here, this is where the lower legislative line goes. So, basically, these two precincts are in the first district, but in their own legislative. They're in the middle's legislative district. They're not in this legislative district. So, we couldn't pull some people down in here. We couldn't do that, because then you'd have a precinct that has two different ballot styles, because they had two different legislators, and that would cause way too much confusion. So, as you can see, see, the 2 and 1 is up here. Well, it used to be like this, way down here. So, this whole section was added in. So, that's where that 1,100 voters overcrowding the Mutual Elementary. So, what we were proposing to do was to take a piece of 1 and 4 as close as we can to the St. Leonard Elementary and kind of even up the numbers a little bit. So, if we take the southern boundary, like we were talking about, with, let's see if I can show it to you. Okay. This is the section right here, just down Bowen Road, just this section to Garrity. They would just cross over the highway right here and go up to St. Leonard Elementary. Here's Mutual. So, these people here, they would normally have to come up, come up here, or they can come up here, come out, cross over, and go right there. So, this, let me go back. This would then even up a little bit better, because this would put us at 3,229 voters for St. Leonard and 3,316. So, it would bring us down from, you know, take some of that 1,100 that was, you know, the burden on there, off of it. So, this would make it a little more even when it comes to voters. So, they would be able to handle the 3,000 in some voters better, and they would get 3,000 voters. So, it's kind of like evening it up. So, that was, that's our proposal for this end of the county, where we're talking about the precincts, right here. Because this, like I said, there was only like 2,000 something in St. Leonard Elementary. So, that's why I feel we can shave some of the Mutual off and just send them across the road to try to level it out a little bit. And I think then both precincts will, it would be a lot easier for them to handle. All right. So, now, when we get to the southern end, so that would be Patuxent Elementary. So, if you all are aware, I think it's Appeal Lane that's down there. You go down Appeal Lane. If you get to the very end, you turn left, you're in Patuxent Elementary. If you turn right at the dead end, you're at the Southern Community Center. So, what we propose to do is, because we have two precincts that are almost on the same road, and it's kind of crazy to have this section go here, and then it's right there. And plus, Patuxent Elementary doesn't have the space. They do not have the space that the Community Center would have. So, here is like an aerial view of the Patuxent Elementary School, right? They, they come up, and then they come up the little hill there, and they come around. And then, of course, we have all our candidate tents and all that, you know, that go in this section, and then the voters can park here. But then, the office doesn't allow them anymore to go into the main entrance. They're literally having to go out the sidewalk, and they come in a side entrance. Then, they're walking through a room that's empty. They pass the restrooms, and then they go into, I guess, it's the gymnasium. And that's where they have to, and it, it makes it a little more difficult for being accessible. So, and then, when you look at Southern Community Center, Southern Community Center has all the space. They go in on level, level ground, and then this whole back section back here is a giant room. That is where we do our early voting, because that's also our early vote center. And that is what we're proposing. We think that that Community Center can handle the voters from here and from there together. So, when I show you this, I want to go, let me see, go back to that. Okay. The other one that's down there is Mill Creek Middle and Patuxent High School. So, if any of you all are, you know, familiar with that area, they're both on the, what is it called? A Southern Connector Boulevard or whatever, that you come up around, you go to the middle school, then you go back around, and then you come up, and then you come down Patuxent High School. So, let me see, do we have a picture of that one, too? Okay. Here's the middle school. You know how, it's confusing, because the voting is all the way back here in this corner. This is where the voting area is. So, they really have to come down, and then they have to, we have to put signs and everything to try to get everybody to come back here. And then, it's right here in this little gym area. So, that's where they are. Whereas, with Patuxent High School, we have all of this to park, plus they have a huge foyer. It's, it's, the foyer is as big as what, I mean, it's bigger than this room. So, what we are deciding or trying to look at is, if we combine the two precincts, since they're so close together, that we could be able to line up, use the foyer, and line the check-in judges at the foyer, so that that can allow us between eight and 10 check-in judges. And then, once they check in, then they would go into the cafeteria, and that's where they would get their ballot. That way, we could maybe have 30 voting booths there, a couple scanners. So, we, so basically, we double up on everything to make sure that the voters can get in and get out timely, and that there is no backup. So, with us putting that many more resources into these larger precincts, it really flows a lot better. And that's what we want. We don't want voters standing in line. We don't want voters, we never want to see what happened in 2020, ever again. So, we always want to make sure that we have enough resources in each polling place to make sure these voters do not have to wait. So, and of course, the distance here, this was the Community Center. This is Appeal Lane, and there's the dead end. So, there's your Community Center, and then there's your Patuxent Elementary. So, like I said, they're on the same road. So, it's not, you know, I'm not saying they have to go five miles away to go. We're talking about, we're going to travel that same road. Only if we turn right, we're in a much larger facility with a lot more to handle the voters. And the distance like this, this is the Southern Connector Boulevard, where Mill Creek Middle is, and then there's Patuxent High School. So, that is what we were proposing down there. So, this will show you, it also actually, if you take the 1 and 5 and move it with 1 and 2, which is the middle, the Community Center and Patuxent Elementary, the polling place is then now within their precinct. Right now, the polling place is not in their precinct. Like, Patuxent Elementary, they're actually voting outside of their actual precinct, the boundaries of it. And 1 and 7 and 1 and 6, see, if that becomes 1 down here, then they're inside of their actual precinct boundary. See, up here is where it was actually in Solomon's Boundaries. It wasn't in. So, we're trying to also get them inside of the boundaries where they belong. So, this is what the map would look like right here, if we combined those at the end of the road, and if we combined this down here. Solomon's is fine the way it is. We have no reason to even bother Solomon's. Solomon's is working great. So, that's there, and that will only, like I said, we were almost 8,000 voters in Huntington as a super precinct. The max, if we add every one up that we can, is 6,000, pretty much, for the Community Center. That was where the voters would be. So, if we follow the same suit, then that would be approximately 1,500 to 1,800 that will show up on Election Day versus the mail-in ballots and versus the early voting. Because the more, it, it seems like early voting is growing, because early voting seems to be, with us having three early vote sites now, it's so much more convenient for the voters to go in that eight-day period than to worry about coming out on Election Day. This way, they get to go on the weekends or whatever time is convenient for them. And I believe that's why our early voting numbers are continuously rising. So, to compensate for that, this way, if we have some of the precincts combined, they're still going to run just as if it was a single precinct. All right. So, the benefits there, like you said, they're both very close to each other, and they can be combined very easily. We're not asking the voters to go far or out of their way. And like I said, with the voters not showing up on Election Day as they're voting ahead of it, it, you know, will actually work a little bit better. The new locations that we're looking at are much larger. They have a lot more parking, and they're easier, they're more accessible. And that's the key right there. We are always constantly looking to make sure our voting locations have more accessibility, because, you know, as, you know, we get different buildings, and we, sometimes we can't even get decent buildings. So, when we find a decent building, we want to grab onto it and use it for voters. It's so much harder to find election judges in the southern end. I don't know why, but we always have difficulty trying to get enough election judges. This would allow us to get to that 20. If you only have 10 in like Patuxent Elementary and only have 10 in the Community Center, then 20 together is going to be a much better, you know, size, and it's going to get people through the lines. And this way, we can utilize the judges that we have already on. And it also, like we did discuss, it, it does place them, the precincts, within their own boundaries. Whereas, right now, we've been running out of the boundaries, because we had nowhere else to send the voters. Okay. So, our recommendations is, as we've gone through everything, we're going to kind of put it in a nutshell here, was to combine the Fairview Library area, where the trailer is, and Northern Middle, and we want to be able to use Northern High School. That is what we're proposing, is to move them from the middle school into the high school, fix the boundary line down there with 1 and 3 and 1 and 4, which is St. Leonard, and Mutual Elementary, and try to even it up a little bit so that Mutual is not overcrowded. We don't want the people at Mutual to be standing in lines, trying to get into a polling place, when there's a lot less at St. Leonard, and they're, they're not having anything. No, no backups, no nothing. So, this is to try to even up those two precincts down there, voter-wise. The Patuxent Elementary, move it, let's move it into the Southern Community Center. Southern Community Center gives Patuxent Elementary a lot more space, parking, and it's more accessible. So, that's, that's the recommendation that we have. And then, to move the Middle Creek into the high school. So, move the middle school into the high school. So, that is what, basically, in a nutshell, that we are looking to try to improve the voting experiences and help out the voters and find, you know, better places for them to vote in. All right. So, that's the end of my presentation. So, you got your mic, so that we can see if anyone else has?
Thank you. So, in a moment, I'll be opening the floor for public comment, for those who have signed. And I'm going to read some instructions very quickly. The floor has been opened for public comment on this hearing. For those joining virtually, if you wish to speak, please press 9 or use the Raise Your Hand function. Virtual participants will be identified by their screen name or the last four digits of their phone number, and unmuted one at a time. Speakers will be asked to state their name and address. Speakers who are providing comment will be allocated two minutes. I will be, now be opening the floor to public comments. And I will, yeah, so if you could grab the paper for us, let's see if we have anybody signed up. All right. So, the first person is?
Jim.
Jim Dorv-
Yes, Jim Jordan.
Sir, please speak into the mic, if you would, for us. Thank you. And state your name and address.
My name's Jim Jordan, 375 Red Cloud Road, Lesby, Maryland.
Thank you, sir.
We moved in in 97. Gail found out who I was. I was an Elections Judge in PG County since 1998. No, excuse me, 1988. Eighty-eight, eighty-four. Reagan reelection, 84. So, that's when I first started Elections Judge, and came in here. Gail found out that I'd been a judge. She called and said, I need judges. I said, okay, fine. So, I've been an Elections Judge in 1-5, Patuxent Elementary School. I've been the chief judge since about 2008, 2010. So, I have been in charge of that precinct ever since then. Gail uses me a lot. Gail uses me a lot in different things. The move from Patuxent Elementary to the Community Center, I am totally in favor of it because I am a chief judge at the early vote as well. I see the difference between what we have at the Community Center, what we have over at the elementary school. If we combine Southern Middle and Patuxent Elementary into the one precinct there, it's going to be a much better flow. We won't need to have, it would be nice to have 20, but if we can't get 20, we can probably run on 16 to 18. That's what we do for early vote. So I am totally in favor of at least that move. I've worked with Gail since 1998. You can't find a better administrator for, for what she does. So keep her. When she leaves, I leave.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I also have Pamela. Pamela Cousins.
Please state, state your name and address.
Pamela Dunkirk, Maryland. Pamela Cousins. Consolidating polling places historically suppresses voter turnout even with absentee and mail-in voting. You mentioned larger and accessible locations. They're fine as long as the voters are there. Tonight, we have 17 people in the room, and there's 10 online. Doesn't seem like a significant amount of people that will be impacted by these changes that are paying attention tonight. My concern is the fact that I think there's only one meeting scheduled, which was tonight. And if there's consideration to stand up another meeting in the northern and the southern end to give the voters the opportunity to attend, to get the information, I think that would be advantageous to them as voters because we don't want to disenfranchise them. I'm sure that's not the intent. So we want to make sure that we consider adding two more meetings to ensure that all voters have an opportunity to attend. I had to quickly get out of a meeting in order to be here because I'm in Dunkirk to get to Prince Frederick in time for 7:00 PM. So I can imagine that people on the southern end are having similar issues trying to physically come in person. And then you have those that are not able to get online, which is, which is an option. I could have done that, but I prefer to be in person. But you have voters, elderly seniors, who aren't able to get online or able to come out at this time in the evening. So if you consider other meetings, potentially a 5:00 PM time would be probably optimal to ensure that the seniors could potentially come to the meeting for fear of driving home late at night. Thank you for giving me a comment.
Thank you. Do we, do we have any other comments for persons in the audience? Okay. But we do have?
There's no one who's going to raise their hand, but we can give them 15 seconds if they're interested to raise their hand and want to make a comment.
Okay.
But once they raise their hand, definitely.
Well, let's, let's give them, so to be clear, if you're online and you can hear me right now, please either tap 9.
We have, we have.
Okay. I, I do want to make sure. And I believe there's someone else in the audience. Did you want to make a comment as well? All right. So we're going to take the one on, online first, but then, absolutely, I want to make sure everyone has the opportunity. Sherri, if you could go ahead with the person online?
I've got to undo her one second. Okay, A. Born, you can speak.
She put her head down. Let's, all right, let's go ahead and take the one person in the audience then, and if she raises her hand again or indicates in any way, I'll make sure she has the opportunity to be heard. So we do have one more person in the audience who'd like to speak. And if you approach the microphone, and would you give us her name and address, please? Thank you.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
My name is Gladys White. I live in Port Republic. My one question is, I understand the changes that you want to make, and I think that they're practical. However, my issue is how are you going to inform the voters in those areas? Because my interest is making sure that the voters actually know about the changes during the primaries and really ahead of the primaries. I know there'll be organizations that will do their part to inform them, but I want to know what your office is going to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Gladys. Yes, this is not the end of the road right now. This also will have to go to the State Board for approval, and the state of Maryland's going to have to approve it, and we have to do accessibility studies and different things. This is just the beginning of the phase. However, what our intentions are to notify every voter that this may affect is to, they will be sent a new identification card that tells them of the change. However, we didn't feel that that was quite enough, so we felt that when their sample ballots are ready to come out, we, I've also looked into maybe highlighting their polling place on the front of the envelope with their name and address that says, your polling place may have changed. Please, you know, check this. And then we were talking about highlighting it so that maybe instead of opening it up and finding, it would be right there when they get it in the mail. So it would have their name, address, but then also highlighted in yellow would be their current polling location. So, and we're also going to go through, we'll go through the county government. We would like to be putting it on, we do the newspapers, we'll do the internet, we'll also do, what did we do? Social media. So we're going to also try to throw it out there with the, what did we call it? The communications, media, whatever. And then we'll probably do something to where we, I've done it before. We do like a, like a video, and then we put the video out there, like of this presentation that shows. So we're not going to, we don't want to just say, oh, okay. You know, see, this all came from House Bill 4, this all came from House Bill 411. See, before, we didn't have like a public comment or anything. They would just tell us, when things change, you need to change it. And then we'd just send out notifications. But with this new bill, and we also felt that we owed it to let the public know some of the changes and to let them be aware of it. So that's why we're going to try to send as much as possible out to notify them and with great organizations like yours. We'll be definitely leaning on your organizations and any other organization that will help us get the word out. So it's not like we just want to do it and, you know, we want to make sure everyone knows prior to the election coming up. Thank you, Gladys.
And to be clear for everyone, the comment period is open for 10 days. If you have suggestions on how to communicate or anything else, the comment period will be open for 10 more days. So you feel free to submit those suggestions if you don't wish to do it at a public forum Any other public comments? I'm looking, apparently, I keep saying that and I keep getting more, which is okay. Please approach the mic, please state your name and address.
Chris Haiska, Bareda Boulevard, Lesby, Jump Point. And I'm an election judge in the southern part. And I think as far as getting, having a hard time getting election workers is because a lot of people think it's all volunteer. So I think if you put it out that, you could actually get paid for doing it, maybe more people would sign up to do it. And I also have a question. If you combine these, you know, Mill Creek into Patuxent High, will you have more chief judges or do you stick with the basic two? You'll have more chief judges?
Yeah. If Patuxent High School, they're going to need more than just two.
Okay. And there was something else, but I forgot. But, okay, that's it.
Thank you. And while election judges and recruiting of election judges is not the purpose of the public hearing, I think everybody on the board, and I know we have some board members who are very active in making sure we do recruit, and I want to echo that, if you wish to be a public, an election judge, please apply. We are always open. Please apply. We're always open for election judges. And yes, it is a paid position. All right. I'm going to give one more. Any more comments? And it worked, all right. All right. Please state your name and address for us.
My name is Jeanette Flame, and I live in Chesapeake Beach. I have a question about District 3-2, Precinct 3-2. It's saying unavailable, and I know that was Beach Elementary. So because you still have it, are you going to reopen Beach Elementary?
Yeah.
So, okay.
Because of the legislative lines and because?
Yeah, I'm sorry. People in line can't hear you.
Because of the legislative lines and what has happened, that's why Beach Elementary, of course, was under renovation. That's why they were merged in with Sunderland Elementary. So we're basically only going to be doing a renumber. So it won't have a 3-2. So we'll probably have to put new numbers there to get rid of 3-2.
Okay.
So we won't be going back to Beach Elementary now.
Okay. So you just keep reducing the polling places?
Yes.
For people to go to?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
No? And apparently we do. All right, welcome. Please state your name and address for us. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Honneth Claggett. I live in Owings, Maryland. I apologize for my tardiness, and this question may have been answered already. When I walked in, it sounded like you, ma'am, were speaking in the affirmative that these changes were taking place. It was my understanding that these are proposed changes and you're taking public comment on the changes. So I would just say that as you're talking to constituents and community members, explain to them that these are proposed changes. Because I was a little taken back, as I said, when I walked in, and the way you were speaking, it sounded like this is what we're doing, but we have to take public comment as a matter of the law because of HB, I forget the number that you referred to. So that's a little standoffish to me, and I was hoping to see a lot more members of the community here tonight to give public comment. And possibly, there are some community members who passively feel the same way that I feel that maybe these changes are changes that you have already decided upon.
Thank you. And to be clear, these are proposed changes. This is public comment. And this is not the last step. Not only would the board take comment, consider, and then have to approve or disapprove of these comments, and we're not even at that stage yet, but then it has to go through other, I think it actually has to go to the county board, and they will actually vote, the state board. So there are multiple levels. So this is the first step in many. And again, these are a comment period, so nothing is written in stone. I want to make sure that is adamantly clear to everyone here. Any questions? Any comments? I can, I can keep you here until 8:00, really. It's okay, and just keep asking. But I won't. So unless anybody else has a comment here or online? In that case, I will, unless there's objection from a member of the board, I will move to adjourn, and I thank you all for coming out this evening. Everyone, take care.